Okay, I have seven o'clock, so let's call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries, the Mayor of Tongonoxi. Mr. Porter, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Mr. Hempel.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Here.
Mayor Fries.
Here.
Ms. Stevens is absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Porter, and I would invite you to honor your country and stand with us as we recite the Pledge of the Legion. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up for open agenda?
Mayor Monica Gee signed up to request to make an announcement to the City Council.
Fantastic. Ms. Gee, sorry to interrupt you. Would you mind stepping behind the podium into the mic? Thank you very much.
So I did leave an invitation for you, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Gee. The space looks fantastic. You did a great job on the west side. It looked really nice. I'm excited. Does anyone else care to speak at this point? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Which I don't hear. I have, sorry. First, we need to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion about them? Is there a motion?
The motion we approve is presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, hang on a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, now moving on to the bills for the bill payments. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
This is Chris Samood.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to old business. Item A, discuss survey findings related to temporary parking options for downtown. Mr. Brackovich.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. We've got a brief presentation. I'm going to ask Chief Lawson to come up. The, at our last council meeting, you folks gave staff direction to go and survey the businesses located along Fourth Street to get some input on curbside delivery and temporary parking related to the discussion we had around COVID and some businesses making that request to consider a temporary type change. There was additional discussion from the City Council regarding things like ADA compliance and do we have enough spaces. So what the presentation we have tonight tries to encompass all of that. The chief will go over the survey results. The PD, like I mentioned, reached out directly to everyone, and then we'll close it out with some additional information on both ADA and how a lot of this relates back to the comprehensive plan updates that we did through Planning Commission and the City Council in 2017, and then ending with some additional discussion. So with that, Chief Lawson, if you're ready, we can pull up. Dan's got the presentation ready.
Good, great. Good evening, Council. Thanks for having us and letting us go through this. Staff had asked that, or City Hall had asked that we kind of look into the COVID temporary parking for curbside services for numerous different businesses around town, and George and I had discussed actually how, what the best way was to do that and, you know, kind of try to get an overall consensus about what the feeling of the business owners were downtown that could be affected by this. If they thought that was a good idea, if the business owners thought it was a good idea, if they could utilize such a service, or if they believed that it would kind of inhibit or cause problems for them if such a service was given to a neighboring business. So I contacted all the businesses I could. There were a few. Just to give one example, you know, Good Shepherd is in and out, you know, on various different hours. We weren't able to catch, like, I'll just use them as examples, that we weren't able to catch them and a couple others that are that are open kind of more periodically than on a daily basis. But for the most part, we actually did contact most of them. And as you can kind of see, the storefront types up here on the presentation, as far as the office, financial, whether it be medical, restaurant, retail, salon, childcare, art, and then, of course, the vacant businesses on Fourth Street and so on and so forth, for the funeral, and we have one residential. So we contacted each one of those, and the way we kind of framed our questions was this, is that, and there was kind of some rumors going around, some misinformation about are we trying to designate parking on Fourth Street for businesses? And I tried to dispel as much of that as I possibly could, saying this is going to be a temporary curbside service type situation for a COVID pickup. For instance, like the restaurants, or the pharmacy, or any businesses that may have, you know, that service available, that they will actually go out and meet their customer at the curbside and ask that person if they felt more comfortable staying in the car, and if they felt like that was an issue or not. So as you can see right here, we had 38 storefronts, and we contacted, like I said, the vast majority of those. We were able to reach them. If you go to the next slide, Dan, please. The way that I framed, and I actually personally did this myself, I didn't really have any help from staff, and the reason why is I wanted to personally be able to kind of explain the responses, and I wanted to be able to frame the questions in the same way to every different business owner, and I didn't really kind of want someone to explain it differently or to present it differently, and I wanted to have a clear understanding of that. So I collected these numbers, and as you can see up there at the top, there was a no response from a few different businesses as far as the nerve, the need for curbside pickup. And what I basically asked them was, do you see a need for the curbside pickup on some of the different businesses in the community? Obviously, a lot of the business owners said, well, I could see that maybe a restaurant, a pharmacy, anyone giving medical expenses, or excuse me, medical supplies. And, you know, I'm sure that there are other businesses that would like to provide curbside services, you know, that maybe they do or don't. And so we asked basically, is there a need for that? And so the vast majority of the businesses that we contacted were along the no response, that they didn't believe that we actually needed that kind of service here on Fourth Street. And I want to make sure that I frame this appropriately. When I say there was a no, it wasn't, there was a few that were like adamantly against, you know, there should be no reason that we should be doing that. They were very, very, you know, adamant in their responses. And then there were others that just said, no, I just have never seen, I've just never seen a need for it. I've never seen a parking problem on Fourth Street in my specific area, or when I've been out and about, or my business has been open. There was, I think, around two. And I, the chart is a little bit deceiving up there. It looks like that could be around the four-ish number. But, you know, it was more like a two-ish or three-ish number that said that they, yeah, that there could be a need for such a service. On the next one, dedicated parking in front of the storefronts. And again, we classified that with, this is a temporary COVID measure that, you know, I mean, that it's meant for a curbside pickup for a customer to pull up, meet the business owner in that specific spot. The no reply or vacanters does not apply, you know, I mean, was, you know, right around the area of 15, 16 issues, you can see. Neutral was like, I really don't have a preference, and most of those businesses that we spoke with that were neutral, for instance, have parking in their back, and they're like, it really doesn't affect me, so I don't have a preference. And so what I tried to tell those different businesses was, let's pretend you didn't have that parking in the back. You being a business owner, you know, on Fourth Street, what would your preference be? I mean, let's try to, let's try to frame it like what's best for the city, not so much it doesn't affect me, so I don't have an opinion. And the vast majority of them said, we really have never seen a need for dedicated parking. The noes, as you can see, are 16. Of those noes, kind of going back to what I originally said, it wasn't like there was a lot of adamancy in that. I'd say 50% of the noes were like, no way, no how, we don't need it, it's not necessary. And the other ones like, well, I just, I really haven't seen a need for it, but I wouldn't actually raise heck or object, you know, I mean, if something like that happened, but I just don't see a need for it. So, and then, of course, we have two, we had two that were like, yeah, that's a good idea, and I might want to, you know, capitalize on that for a curbside service as if in fact such a service was provided by the city in a short span of time. So that's kind of the numbers. I kind of went through that relatively quickly, but I'd be more unhappy and anxious to ask and answer any questions.
Any questions, Council?
Okay, great.
Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
No, go ahead, please.
Were you clear in asking the questions, asking the question, do you need a dedicated parking spot in front of your place versus do we need dedicated parking?
I, you know, I think I was relatively clear. I know that I got at least one or two that said, I, and I told it, I told everybody that I surveyed, we're not going to use any names specific, so I'm trying to be general here, but yes, both. Would you be for it? And, you know, I mean, do you need, and on, I have an Excel spreadsheet that I actually built. I actually asked, and I don't think we actually, I put that on that portion of the PowerPoint, do you provide curbside service? And there was five businesses in town, and I don't mind, you know, throwing the, who those folks are without an opinion, but, you know, both restaurants do, the pharmacy does. I think Wizard of Oz does, you know, when somebody actually asks for that service to be provided, that they, that they get that. I take that back, six. The law office said in certain specific instances that they will bring out papers to someone if they request to do that. So there was six. So, yeah, yes, Mayor, the simple answer is yes, we did answer that question. And around six people that run those businesses said, yes, we do provide that service upon request. And two of those, I think one of those folks out of those six said that I would like a spot, if, you know, that I would actually like that spot. There was another one that said, they had a misunderstanding, that said, well, yeah, if they're going to be given out, I would probably request one. And I clarified that this is probably the vision of the Council at this point in time, without speaking for you all, is that this is going to be temporary around a 90-day timeframe until this COVID crisis, we kind of overtake the hump. And then that person backed off and said, well, then, no, if it's just temporary, no, I wouldn't want that. And they kind of mistook the temporary COVID situation for assigned parking on Fourth. So, yeah, that question was asked, and I think we had, I think, one, maybe two, that said that they would like that.
Thank you, Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Council? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Brackovich, do we require action on this? This is just for our edification?
Well, you, it is for your information, but if you want to have additional conversation, because it did stem from a request, you know, I'd say this is kind of the culmination of our previous discussions and coming back with this information. If you don't mind, we do have just a couple of additional slides, because I wanted to make sure we addressed some of the other issues that came up. Again, with ADA considerations, we did reach out to BG, which is the City Engineering Group. A lot of the work along Fourth Street predates a lot of the existing staff here, so it's very valuable to have their input, and as a reminder, Brian Kingsley said, you know, ADA kind of revolves around good faith efforts in terms of the enhancements that you provide. Specifically looking at Fourth Street, that downtown streetscape was designed in 1999. And he felt comfortable saying it was designed to whatever standards existed at that time. ADA standards were last updated in 2011, and he's reasonably sure that if it was a new project held to those standards, there would probably be some additional enhancements that would be required. So in general, there is a requirement of one ADA space per 25 parking spots on each side of the street. So our case is kind of unique because it's parallel parking to the curb in unmarked stalls. But the little image at the bottom of this slide is actually a cutout from the 1999 design of Fourth Street, and it, and I know it's hard to read, but on the left side is green, and on the right side is berry, and that shows if you applied typical parking space sizes, that you would get to about 24, 23 to 25 spaces. So there would be a requirement of having at least one ADA space within that area. Brian suggested, just with the makeup of our downtown with all the cross streets, it might be actually easier to accommodate if we wanted to, ADA parking on the cross streets as opposed to Fourth Street, because one of the great things Fourth Street does have are ADA compliant ramps and access to the sidewalks all the way up and down this particular analysis area. And so probably one thing we need to keep in mind is any future improvements or enhancements, or if we come back and do another streetscape design, we're probably going to have to incorporate additional ADA enhancements just to be at least to the 2011 standards, or if there's new standards that are created between now and then. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the comprehensive plan updates. So again, for, I know you guys are aware, but for other folks that are maybe watching or listening, the comprehensive plan is kind of the city's largest planning document, and we do occasional updates to that. It's a document that's meant to last anywhere from 10 to 20 years, depending on the growth of your community. For Tongonoxi, it's probably 20-year plan is a good scope for that. But one thing we did in 2017 is updates to that overall plan. So we looked at three specific sections of that, and instead of updating the entire thing from cover to cover, we looked at public realm, connectivity, and future land use. So I wanted to touch on those pieces because each one of the sections we updated talked about Fourth Street specifically. So the public realm, they looked at a variety of streets in the community, and each street has a a character assignment to it. For Fourth Street, it's an activity street, and that's the image that's at the bottom, that's coming straight from that comp plan update, and you can see two travel lanes, and so for Fourth Street, you know, that's moving east and west, a parking lane, a curb, a small strip, and then sidewalk. And that, one of the main focuses of activity streets is the pedestrian traffic way. Obviously, Fourth Street is a perfect example of that. You've got sidewalks. Rarely do people park right in front of where they're going, usually within the block, but that's exactly what it's designed for. An additional component within the public realm section is identifying certain gateways to the community. Entryways on 2440, specifically Fourth Street is considered a downtown gateway. And so, again, keeping with the activity street design, its enhancement, it wants to draw pedestrian traffic as well as vehicles down into the downtown. Connectivity, it's kind of a a complicated piece, but the no-brainer part of it is, Fourth Street is one of our main east-west connectors for the community. And with the sidewalks, it, again, promotes pedestrian traffic as well as vehicles. And then the future land use, really, when you looked at downtown, what we did with future land use, we didn't create new zoning categories, but they created new land use categories, and there was two specifically for downtown. There's a downtown retail and a downtown mixed use. And both of those categories, when you read through them, they specifically acknowledge that there's on-street parking available within these districts, as opposed to kind of something like a more suburban model where you build a box store in the back, and there's a ton of parking out in the front. So again, I just wanted to acknowledge that, so if we're looking at bigger picture issues, I want to make sure we weren't missing out on where we needed to be or how we need to approach ADA, and then, again, keeping these comp plan updates in our forefront. And then the final slide, again, is just to incorporate what Chief Lawson had with the survey results, some of these other big picture items, and again, to promote the discussion amongst the policymaking group, which is you folks. You know, what do we want to do moving forward here? We talked about in two previous meetings, a lot of options, including, do we want to allow businesses that need a temporary COVID curbside pickup to put some sort of small sign on the sidewalk that would be unobstructive to pedestrians walking up and down, but that it would be kind of the honor system? You know, that folks hopefully would respect that if if there was a need for a business to have that for a defined short period of time. I think we looked, the last meeting, we talked about the standard traffic ordinance for the state of Kansas, and that it really gave us two options. One was we could consider kind of that emergency provision, which COVID would qualify under, and with the police chief or the city engineer's direction, we could, for a 90-day period, account for that kind of a temporary need. Then we talked about, did we want to look at Fourth Street and creating a long-term solution to define 15-minute or limited parking spaces? And there didn't seem to be much support to head for a long-term solution. It seemed to be more focused on a temporary, filling that temporary need, and then that survey was kind of the filler piece to really get a good understanding of what the ask was from our, our community and our business owners, and really kind of get a better gauge for what the true need of that was.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brackovich. So if I'm understanding correctly, because of COVID, folks are allowed to have temporary spots, but it's not enforceable? Is that correct, or is that not correct?
There, there is a provision in the standard traffic ordinance where if we took a formal action, we could try to enforce it based on the statutory allowance for that temporary procedure. I, I suggested at the last meeting, we know how much staff we have on our police department, and what kind of priority that type of a call would receive, and the odds that by the time that call comes into a non-emergency line, to the time an officer would actually respond, that issue may have resolved itself anyway. And so that was one of the suggestions, is if we wanted to go with doing something like this, can we leave it on the honor system and ask the patrons, regardless of what business they're going to, if they don't need to park right in front of a storefront that has requested that, that they not do that, as opposed to trying to issue citations and take it to a municipal court setting.
Okay, thank you. And I've driven it and walked it, and I'm not seeing any ADA stalls at all on Fourth Street. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
George, what, is there anything currently that would stop a business owner from putting a sign out front now that says, that says, please, this spot for, you know, for walk-up or for whatever we call it?
Yeah, the curbside or something. Don't park here unless you're coming here.
Is there anything stopping them from just putting a sign out and doing it now?
There are some things, specifically in the city code, you can't put an obstruction on the sidewalk that prohibits pedestrian traffic, or, you know, pushes pedestrian traffic into the street. That's why I think most folks, again, I hate to hang the hat on the honor system, but I really think that if somebody was interested and they put a small enough sign, I think most folks, at least it's been my experience in Tongonoxi, that most folks would try to honor that. But again, outside of assigning a police officer, tasking an officer with resolving that by issuing citations, I don't know that what the survey results indicated would warrant that level of a policy being created and enforced. So long-winded answer, I'm not even sure if I really answered your question, Mr. Dale, so I'm sorry about that. So, yes, there are some planning and code provisions that would prohibit it, whether it's something in the sign code, or an obstruction on a sidewalk. But, you know, again, if there's somebody that's interested in doing that, I think from a staff level, I would offer to work with them to make sure they weren't in violation of any of those issues. But I think there needs to be a clear distinction made, then are we doing that on a temporary basis because of an emergency situation, for example, created by COVID? As, and then there's a firm end date or a bookend to when you can, you need to stop doing that, versus, oh, yeah, I'll just put that up anytime I feel like I need, have a need for it. And I think that's maybe the distinction you're partially looking for.
So maybe a policy that outlines for a 90-day period that business owners can can put a sign out that is approved by city staff and give the the authority to approve such a sign to staff would potentially be enough?
I think that's something we could work with.
Any more questions?
I'll just comment. I I think I understood the chief's present, presentation, and I appreciate it very much. Are we making a mountain out of a molehill? I mean, for something that is maybe once, and I don't know, I've not heard of huge uprising over this. If it's once or twice a month or every two weeks? Are we creating something that we don't need? Because it looked to me like we don't need it from what the people who operate there say. But maybe one, I mean, I didn't see a mass, I mean, group saying we need to have it. So are we just, if we leave it just like it is, it'll end up being just like it is, and it doesn't appear to be a problem? So are we creating something that's just to create something for once or twice out of 1,000 opportunities, or, I don't know the number, but I've been in five different businesses downtown last week and had no trouble whatsoever doing anything. So that's just my, we can create lots of policy if we want to, but are we doing it for the sake of creating policy?
I, I agree. I think, though, I think that making a mountain out of a molehill would be coming up with some grandiose policy that requires, you know, a permit, or requires enforcement by the police, or something like that. But I think that the few individuals that said that, yeah, they could, they could use that. You know, and I think about, I think about the law office, and I think about the restaurants, and I think about the pharmacy. There's only a few of them, so putting something in place that is temporary and minor, that would have little effect, kind of takes care of those without impeding those that don't think it's needed. Does that make sense, too? So you've got maybe four spots downtown that, any day for 90 days, would have a sign out front that says, hey, please leave this spot open for curbside services for our business. And on the other hand, then the rest of, the rest of downtown parking is all just as it is. And it's not a mountain out of a molehill, but it's giving a little something to those businesses that could benefit or could take advantage of such a deal.
I mean, are, so there, are they having specific issues now that they don't have space? I'm going to guess not.
I don't know if it's necessarily not having space, but one example I heard, and I'd like to maybe hear Ms. Gee's perception and insight on it as president of TBA. But one of the examples I heard was the law firm that will have someone come up for just signing a document. Easy, quick, bam, and it's a small office front. So if someone comes up and they're parked, they have to park even two stores down, it might not be far for them to get out and go in, but the folks in the law office don't know they're out there. But they have that spot in front of their office, and they see the person, their customer, their client pull up, they know they're there. You know, we're also, we also, some folks don't have the sophistication or infrastructure or ability to just call in and say, I'm here, and then have someone come out to take care of them. So I think it is, it is a minor thing. We've been talking about it a whole lot. But, but I see it, my perception is that, my vision is just to have it something minor so that the few people that could take advantage can, but not over-engineer it by any means.
Okay, is that a dead horse? Okay.
We got, we got.
Okay.
Well, come, come on up.
Yeah. Please, please step to this podium and tell us your name and your address, please.
It's Tuna. I've got a business at curbsides. Been curbside.
But, you know, when they call in for a curbside, we ask them what they're driving, we look for it. We've walked as far as Quinzenberry's. It's not a big deal. Do I like to continue free deliveries? No, but I go three miles out of town. You just adjust. And for like a lawyer's office, they call in to get a paper signed? The only law office I know in town is in the middle of the block, got a back door. Hey, I'll meet you out back. Tell me when you're coming. That way you don't have to look for a parking spot. Been here 66 years. You don't want to open up a can of worms sometimes. But the curbside, I don't see is a big deal. We, we, they tell us what they're driving, we take it and deliver it to them. Walk out and give it to them. Half a block away, block away. You just adapt. You don't have to babysit. Will we continue curbside? Probably. Will we continue deliveries when this is over with? Probably. It's another part of the business. So I, I, I think you're kind of making, people need to adapt, that's all. Quit bringing everything hand-delivered to them. Business owners need to adapt. Times are changing. What we're wearing here, it's probably going to last a lot longer than we think. Flu season will be coming again, so, I mean, you just adapt. But curbside, we've never had a problem. Anything, there may be a handicap problem downtown. Hear about that now and then, but I've never heard anything about curbside. And I think the handicap issue will be something tough to tackle because we don't have a lot of parking spots, and where you put them, but I think that's an issue. But I think curbside laziness, we just, we do it. We don't complain about it to anybody. That's just where we're at with it. But we appreciate what you're trying to do. It's just limited parking. But you need people to walk the streets to see the store windows, too, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tuna. Does anyone else care to speak on this?
Monica Gee, and I do want to make sure you, we, as the business association, we did have a few businesses come up and say, hey, can you help us figure out what we can do? Some of them didn't have the funds to do signs. So, I know there was grant relief money for different things, but there wasn't for signs that I knew of. So, we have approached the council as just a general question of should we be providing something or allowing it? And it's not allowed, so that's why we wanted to make sure we're taking care of the few businesses who needed it. So, if they wanted to come forward, they could. They knew tonight, the meeting was tonight, but I can't make someone come forward. I could only express, as the president of TBA, that there were a few people who came forward.
Thank you, Ms. Gee. We'll close the book on that for now and come back to it later, perhaps. We'll move on to new business, item A. At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for the CDBG-CV Economic Development Grant Project Number 20, CV-120, closeout. Mr. Porter.
Mayor, no people indicated they wanted to participate, so we could just ask if anyone here wants to speak about it, and then close the public hearing, and then Brett Wagner is on the phone and would like to make a quick comment about his role as the grant administrator for this project, too.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Does anyone care to speak to this topic? Not seeing anyone, so we will close the public hearing. And, and you said that there was a comment on the phone. Go ahead.
Brett, would you like to introduce where we're at tonight?
Absolutely. Hi, Mayor Fries and council members, this is Brett Wagner with Governmental Assistance Services. We were hired to do the application way back earlier this summer, as well as the grant administration for this program. And I'm happy to announce that we're almost done. We just have a little bit of closeout paperwork left to go. The same process that we went through with your urgent need grant a few months ago. And, once we turn this in, there's $2,000 left of the grant funding that was awarded to the city, and that will be divided evenly among the remaining two businesses that have yet to receive funds. And, once we, once we get this paperwork turned in, we'll probably have that money in about a week and a half or so. And we can write the checks and kind of put all the documents away, and, and hopefully look for another opportunity to get you another grant somewhere down the road.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Did that close the public hearing?
It's, it's closed, yeah.
Okay. Moving on, you need motion?
Yes, Mayor. So, the agenda packet included a draft motion, which was to authorize the execution of the closeout documents. One thing I'd like to highlight, though, just to refresh the memory of the city council about this program, was the city was awarded in the second round of funding through the CDBG-CV program for $59,400. And earliest, we received one urgent application, and immediately were able to authorize $30,000 to Freedom Defense Arms. And secondarily, we then were able to process later in 2020, two payments to 1866 Bar and Grill and Flashbacks, so two of our largest restaurants and stalwart businesses in the downtown core. And so those businesses have each received $13,700 to date, and the remaining $1,000 per business will close out those commitments and bring them up to $14,700 per business. And so we're, we're very pleased that we're able to finish that obligation to them that they requested through application that was approved previously by the council. So excited to have this done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Porter. At this point, we'd be looking for, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Before we have a, a motion, I would just like to point out on the grantee's release form, the wrapper in me is okay with $50,400, but I think it's probably, should have an extra F in there and be $59,000 before it all gets officially filed.
We'll make that correction. Thank you.
Any more questions or discussion? If not, I'd be looking for a motion.
I would make the motion that we, let's make sure I get this correct, or I guess it's, since it is a grant, we want to get it right. Okay. Make a motion to authorize the execution of the project closeout document for CDBG-CV Grant Project Number 20, CV-120.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
And Brett, thank you for your work on it. Appreciate your help.
Yes. Thank you all for the opportunity to help out. We certainly appreciate it and hope we get to work with you again soon.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on to item B, Consider Acceptance of Public Dedications for Final Platte of Stone Creek Subdivision Edition Number 9. Mr. Donnelly, you had something to say?
If you mind, I will abstain from any voting and leave the podium and answer questions since I am involved in Stone Creek Development, I am Stone Creek Development, so I don't think it's appropriate for me to vote on any of it.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Appreciate that. Mr. Porter, do we have enough people here to, to vote on this item?
We do, Mayor. Yes. Thank you.
So, Mr. Breckovich.
Yes. Let me see. So, Planning Commission, again, plats are typical documents that you, that the city council will see come before you. The item did go through Planning Commission for review. There were some additional comments. We kind of bifurcated the approval on the final plat because there were some outstanding engineering comments, which have now been addressed, and so this item is coming before you, I believe, with unanimous approval from Planning Commission. The developer is here and available to answer any questions, should you have those. But staff recommendation is to move forward and approve the item.
Are there any questions or any discussion?
I've got a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Hempel.
I just want to make sure, and I ask this of everybody who will get something for planning zone, are you aware what conditions were recommended by staff and you're willing to buy by those?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Mr. Donnelly, will there be sidewalks in this?
Yeah, there'll be five-foot sidewalks that fit, it'll all fit city code exactly like it's set up.
Okay. And I didn't see any green spaces in the, in the drawings, is that correct?
The green spaces were dedicated at the original plat where we gave the city two tracts. I don't remember the exact amount. It, one has a park in it now where we provided the playground equipment at cost, and the city provided the labor to put it in. The second tract sat empty for 10 years in the agreement that was back in 1999. The agreement said if the city didn't utilize the rest of the park, it would come back to the developer, and it sat empty and, for 10 years, and actually it was three or four years past the deadline, when I think Shane, well, it wasn't Shane, it was, I can't remember, it's before George finally came and said, hey, we found that we, we've been dragging this out longer than expected, so they deeded that piece back. So we actually gave almost three acres originally to the city, plus the park equipment, and then nothing else was ever done with it. So there is green space in it, but it was given originally when it platted back in 99.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Are there any other questions? If not, I would be interested in a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Hempel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve final plat for Stone Creek Edition, Edition Number 9, with conditions recommended by staff, and accept the dedication of the land for public purposes included in the final plat.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll on the vote, please?
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Porter, thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item C, Consider Request for 2021 Funding Assistance for Tonganoxi Arts Council. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Dan Porter, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to start with a quick overview about this request and the overall set of requests that the city council received for consideration in the 2021 budget development. But I'd first like to point out, Lee Kaufman is here, representing the Tonganoxi Arts Council, the entity with the requests up for consideration tonight. And so if you have any particular questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to address the city council and, and answer those questions. To give a quick background on this request, it's an amount not to exceed $5,000 as developed in the 2021 budget. Last May, we received a letter from the Arts Council requesting that amount, and providing a little bit more background about their planned programming, what their vision was for these, this year, and why they requested the funds. They also included a letter that's in the agenda packet tonight, reaffirming that request and asking that we authorize the issuance of the check to the organization. To give a, a little bit of overview, we typically field requests from other organizations like the Tonganoxi Business Association, and last year also included a request from the Tonganoxi Historical Society for funding assistance. The city has a limited pool of funds for those requests, coming out of the general fund, which is largely property and sales tax revenue, and fields services like police, fire, streets, and, and other infrastructure the city maintains and services the city provides. So to give a quick recap, last year, Arts Council received $1,000, the TBA received $5,000. In 2021, the request from Arts Council was 5,000, but the TBA, based on the impacts at the time of early onset of the COVID pandemic, declined to make a request of funding this year. And so their funding request was zero in 2021, and, and that hasn't changed to this point. The Historical Society requested two things, funding and/or changes to directional wayfinding signs, and the city council, at the final conclusion of the budget development, elected to approve the replacement of signs with signs that included their facility, and thus giving them that assistance, but didn't approve the financial assistance. So, sorry for the confusing multiple parts, but I just wanted to make that awareness and recall to those discussions that were several months ago, last summer. The Arts Council, like I said, is, is happy to answer any particular questions, but staff would recommend approval if the city council doesn't have any other changes or concerns they'd like to, to offer.
Mr. Porter, are there any questions? Ms. Kaufman, hi, I'm, I was, my computer messed up here, I lost my packet, but can you just briefly explain how the $1,000 was used that we had last, that we gave you last year? Do you recall?
I think we used the, the $1,000 to pay the insurance that we'd used, you know, that we, we had. And just to, you know, just stuff like that. What, we're still planning to do the, the children's story, storytelling festival, and we still want to do, we, you know, we, we postponed everything last year, we just shut it down for last year. So, we just use that money for essentials to pay the bills. And then, this year, we're planning to, to, we would like to go ahead with the festival again, but it, it'll be according to what, what's going on at the time, how we can do that. Last year, I went ahead and to, to keep the artists still involved, had a, a paintout at the lake, you know, instead of having a big gathering of people, to, to still keep it carrying on, doing something during that COVID year when we really couldn't do much. So, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
If I remember correctly, we had a budget for, I mean, is there, is that budget still the same, or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the, the budget included a $5,000 planned allocation in the general fund. Yep.
No, no, I'm sorry, but we, we got a budget from the Art Council.
We did.
And it's still the same budget, and we're still operating, we're still making that assumption that that budget's the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Did they present us with budget?
Okay. Great. Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Hempel.
I'd like to make a motion, authorize 2021 contribution Tonganoxi Arts Council on the amount not to exceed $5,000.
Thank you, Mr. Hempel. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Did you get that, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Would you mind calling the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Mr. Dale.
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly.
Yes.
Mr. Hempel.
Yes.
All eyes, Mayor. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman, for the work you're doing. We appreciate it. Item D, Consider Recruitment Options for Vacancy on the Tonganoxi Planning Commission.
Thanks, Mayor. So this item is primarily an informational piece for you. We wanted to provide an update. We took the suggestions from the council in terms of reaching back out to parties that were previously interested in openings on either council or planning commission, and we've had no success in securing an applicant. I, I did want to acknowledge our planning commission is a seven-member board. We are very fortunate to have a, a good group. They attend on a very regular basis. So carrying one vacancy, and I know our planning commission president is, is here, but carrying one vacancy is not a grave concern. However, we are aware that one of our current planning commissioners will not be seeking reappointment in April. And so, carrying two potential vacancies and juggling the summer months where it becomes a little more difficult to balance out people traveling and being available for a meeting, we start to kind of maybe have a little more worry about the ability to field a quorum for a meeting. Now, there's a variety of options. This new facility gives us a chance for folks to call in. Those are some of the options we didn't have before, and, and so maybe we could survive that. So the information we wanted to bring before you is, we're open to additional suggestions. You know, we've used a variety. You know, we've used a variety of tools to reach out to the public. Again, a chance to talk about it during the meeting tonight. And so if there's anybody thinking about some sort of public service, this is a great way to come in. You really get a chance to know what's going on in the community. There's really, I can't think of any occasion where a brand-new project comes to the community that it doesn't go through planning commission. And it's a, it's a critical tool, the commission itself is, in terms of what the city council and the objectives that need to be met. And, you know, earlier tonight, we talked about the comprehensive plan and I think those are very important guiding documents that we use to try to anticipate how the city will grow and try to manage in a responsible way that we end up with a very good, sustainable community for Tongonoxie. So that's my elevator speech when I run into somebody that acts like they're interested. So hopefully, that doesn't talk them out of it. But again, we were open to any suggestions you might have. Or again, simply a reminder to keep reaching out to folks that you think might be interested in the post itself.
Mr. Donnelly, did you have a question?
No, I, I just, I will comment that I've asked quite a few people to consider it. And I get the same thing that you've been, that we've been getting. And I concur that it is a great learning opportunity for folks. Monica can tell you, you get to learn about how a city grows and how it develops and you're working with engineers and you're working with planning people who are thinking forward. And so if you are out there and you want to help, come on, it really is a great way to learn something. It's generally low pressure. So please, and I will keep asking, I ask somebody every week to consider it and they, they all say the same thing. We need volunteers.
Yeah, it's difficult, not everybody sees the same Facebook. And if you can solve that problem on how to reach everyone, you could probably save the newspaper industry. Okay.
We'll keep plugging away, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, keep asking folks. Okay, item E, consider approval of a quote for police station facility roof and siding repair. This is Dan, Mr. Porter?
Thank you, mayor. So the item included in the agenda packet is a quote and a collection of quotes for consideration for this work. Kent Heskett, our Public Works Director, has worked with Chief Lawson to identify the scope of services included in these quotes and to collect those two bids that you see listed in the agenda packet. We requested bids from another vendor, Garrison Roofing, and didn't receive, as of the meeting tonight, a complete quote back from them. So we just have the two full, complete quotes to include. You can see that the low bid for the work was $12,150 from Andy's Roofing and Exteriors. I apologize for the quality of the image of the scan, I think it was a picture of a picture sort of a situation. But it's a two-page document. The first page includes option one and two. Option two is what's being proposed for acceptance tonight, which is a total, a subtotal of $2,500. The second page includes another subtotal of $9,650, which is how you arrive at the sum total of the project. The quick overview of the scope, when you consider the front elevation of the police station facility on Church Street, you can notice that there's what looks like a remnant of a cupola or bell tower style appearance above the front entry doors. Behind that, there's a lower section of the roof, a small piece of siding moving up, and then a higher section of the roof that extends back to the south on the building for the remainder of the span of the building. What's being proposed in this scope is the replacement of the shingles on the lower section of the roof that has a peaked elevation. Replacement and repair of siding that's been damaged by water, generally attributed to improper installation or lack of installation of adequate flashing at the connection point between the shingles and the siding. So that's something that has caused problems and needs to be repaired to avoid a bigger expense down the road. This item was included in the 2021 budget development and budgeted out of the Capital Projects Fund. The funding used for this item is our share of the county's sales tax, a portion of those funds. And so we're restricted in use to facilities, equipment, infrastructure and streets according to those funding sources. And so this facility's use clearly falls within that. And up to $25,000 was allocated in this year's budget for this project. A couple key points, there's a seven-year workmanship warranty and a 30-year product warranty on the shingles themselves. And one change you'd notice when this is done is what's referred to in that option two on the first page of the quote, which is removal of the cupula-style look. And the reason for that being included is the opinion of staff that that dead airspace above that front door just offers more opportunity for water damage in the future. And by removing it and making the roof line consistent at the lower level and then the second level above it, that'll help preserve the long-term maintenance cost at a low level for the facility and avoid a bigger problem down the road. Went through that pretty quickly, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I don't have any questions, council, do you have any?
Yes. Excuse me, yes. First question is, my understanding, the lower roof will remain, but it'll be reshingles and the siding up above it will be replaced.
That's correct, Mr. Hempel.
Also noticed in the bid, and I hope we can make it part of the motion is, and also use step flashing at shingles to siding and include them in the bid that wasn't in there. That's the reason the roof failed because the shingles were buttoned right up to the siding and they put about 20 tons of tar on it. Yeah, and there could be shingles underneath it, but it needs to include in the motion, I feel, to have step flashing at the shingle to siding.
Staff, do we have any problem with that?
Actually, we appreciate that addition to a motion, it's not included in the agenda packet. We did reach out to the vendor to ask for that clarification in writing and we just simply haven't heard back yet. But I don't feel like there's any cause for concern that they won't include that in writing because it was part of the scope discussions with Kent, clearly.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Are you good, Mr. Hempel? Are you good?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to include it in the motion.
All right, do you want to?
Because it's not in the document.
You care to make the motion?
I'd be glad to.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion authorize execution and acceptance of a quote from Andy's Roofing Exteriors LLC for amount not to exceed $12,150. And also in the bid, step flashing at shingle to siding locations be included in the bid.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Mr. Porter, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Ms. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
All eyes, mayor, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Item F is presentation of report on 2020 Code Enforcement Services.
Thanks, mayor. So in the packet tonight, we've got a two-page report, kind of a year-end report that was submitted by Chris Rittyhouse, who is our part-time codes officer. And he apologizes for not being available for the meeting tonight. But as a quick reminder, and it was a budget item that was approved during July of 19 as we were developing the budget for '20. And so in about this time last year, we were able to interview interested applicants and make an offer to Mr. Rittyhouse for the part-time position. What kind of happened in between there, in addition to COVID, was he switched his full-time employment. He's a firefighter and he does business inspections as part of his full-time employment. And so we were able to flex some of his part-time hours to include weekends. And so there was, he had an ability, for example, if we had someone with tall grass, there was a greater probability that he would make physical contact with the homeowner. Let's say if he was making the rounds on a Saturday morning as opposed to if he was working on a Thursday. So it was something we hadn't technically anticipated or planned for, but I would say in retrospect, it worked out great to have that kind of availability. Part of what we included in the report is the total of 61 cases. Thanks, Mr. Porter, he's put it up on the screen. Just to kind of give you an idea of the general categories, the primary factors were tall weeds and grass and parking on unimproved surfaces. And as you probably recall, we changed a portion of our city code to specifically focus on the parking on unimproved surfaces. Additional categories included things like junk vehicles, blighted property, animal calls and debris. And we actually had a couple of sidewalk complaints that came in through codes. Forty-four of the total 61 cases were resolved and mitigated, which ended the year at a 72% resolution rate, which is phenomenal in the world of code enforcement. That percentage would actually be higher, but we accounted for cases that were allocated or started in 2020 but are still rolling through the court process and haven't been fully mitigated. So I would say Chris is doing a great job. But to that end, we did have four cases that had to have formal citations issued, went through mandatory court dates. Three of those are still being processed. One of those cases was appealed at the district court level. And again, because of COVID concerns, you know, just kind of wasn't a high priority case for district court to hear. But that's back in the cycle with additional hearings being scheduled. We actually had one case, though, that did make it through the process and an abatement ordered was issued. And so our phenomenal public works staff that kind of are jacks and, well, actually, experts of nearly every trade were able to come on site, we used some of the equipment we had. It was a weed, tall grass abatement. We were able to clear that out, which I think the neighbors were really thrilled with. And then we assessed $630, the cost of our labor and equipment to do that back against the property. A couple of additional changes, administrative changes that Chris has brought in was he created a new filing and recording process for the cases that are handled through code enforcement. That ends up on a shared network so that administrative staff has an opportunity to review that. It also, since it's a part-time position, if folks have questions or make phone calls, it's a quick, easy way to access it. Kind of a, sounds maybe like a small change, but it's a fantastic change to have from a management standpoint. Similarly, there was a city ordinance complaint Excel sheet that's now part of an official record-keeping process forum. And then again, working with the municipal court clerk, ensuring that notices were mailed, delivered properly so that by the time items are coming to court, the prosecutor and the judge don't have any questions in terms of consistency in the way we were handling notices. And so we're finding that that's a much smoother transition to have, should those unfortunate cases make it to court just because people are not wanting to be in compliance. The last piece I would put is we created kind of a one-page document that we wanted to be able to share on some of our social media accounts. That again, just highlights the number of cases, the resolution rate, a reminder that, hey, these things do go to court if you don't get into compliance. And again, it may not sound like a lot, but for that one person that just, for whatever reason, didn't want to take care of their weeds and their grass, it was a $630 consequence to have, you know, have it go through the court system and have the city have to go clear that out for you. So if that's, so that's the extent of the presentation we had. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions. And again, kind of looking for a nod if you're okay with doing the one-page document on some social media blast.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Breckovich. That 72%, that's a, that's a good rate.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do, George, just because obviously two or three of these stick out because they're the highest volume numbers. On the cars parking on unimproved surfaces, what is the length? Because there are a couple that I've been watching for a while and they've been a while, how long is that?
In terms of notice and when you have to remove it?
Yeah. Well, how long, I mean, they really aren't supposed to be parked at all on unimproved. And back, one of them's in a backyard particularly and another one's half-parked on the grass and.
Yeah. I don't have recall on exactly the timeframe, but it's typically, there's like 10- and 14-day notice. By the time you receive a formal notice and that you have to resolve the issue. If there's a, I would just suggest that there's a specific property that you noticed that hasn't been addressed, give staff a heads up. I know last year, in our spring newsletter, we put on the back page the four-step process to submit a codes complaint. You don't have to know the code inspector's name, you don't have to have a phone number. You go to the city's website, I want to file a codes complaint, submit a form. And it's, it's pretty intuitive to follow through that and we'd be happy to include that. We're working on the spring '21 newsletter now. And it would be no work at all to include that information again.
And I was more, more looking towards the person who's parking. If they park for a day because they're moving something in or moving something out, I sure want to be flexible and help those folks. But if it's a parking place and they're parking there for three, four, five days, they don't have a, I don't remember the code, but there's not a timeframe, I don't think, in there, they're just not supposed to park there. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes, yes.
And I don't, you know, if somebody's doing something and they're having to work there and they just have to do it, that's sure understandable. But parking and leaving it there and going in the house and spending a couple of days, okay.
Yeah. No, and I think that's a good point. I know one of the strategies Chris employed when he first came on was kind of looking at targeted areas so he could establish some sort of a baseline of what the activity was to see if it was a, and I had a flat tire or my transmission went out, I had to have it towed before I could figure out what shop I wanted it to go to. So, and that's kind of some of the feedback we're getting. Brandon Harder, who did this position before, same feedback with Chris. People that are willing to go ahead and try to get into compliance are always very appreciative of their approaches.
Very good, that's awesome, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? And as a consensus, we're all cool with putting the social media JPEG out?
You bet.
Good with that?
Absolutely.
That's great, I appreciate it, that's a nice little, easy to read, yeah, quick.
Thank you.
Need anything else from us, Mr. Breckovich?
Not on that item, thank you, mayor.
I'm curious, 72% is good, but that includes some that just weren't, didn't have the time to go through the whole process. What would that percentage be without cherry picking those?
If, if we didn't include the ones that were still going through either due process or pushing through the judicial options in excess of 80%?
So I'm just thinking that those that are in process, when we go to this next year and talk about it in 2021, we're gonna, we're gonna count those that started last year and got wrapped up this year. So we're kind of, we're hamstringing ourselves. If it was 80% that actually went through the process and in time and got done in the year, then, you know, that's something to be touted too.
No, and I will definitely share that with Chris. I was pretty adamant that since it was a new program and it was a part-time person, anything that started its clock in 2020, I wanted to be able to account for it when we gave you a year-end report. And yeah, his resolution rate could have looked a little bit better, but we'll definitely keep that in mind for next year. And there's a few cases that are just trickling along. And again, it's nothing against our staff at all. Some of them were just subject to a lot of the craziness related to COVID and getting things scheduled.
Okay, thank you. Item G is the city manager's agenda.
I don't have any additional items tonight, mayor, thank you.
All right, item H is the city attorney agenda. She's not here tonight, correct? Mayor Protem agenda.
I just might add that Acer dropped out of the LCDC. It's my understanding that county commissioners are going to talk about that next Wednesday. And I'm going to verify that, I'm going to be a part of this conversation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hempel. City council agenda, anyone have anything, want to get out there? Okay, and for the mayor's agenda, we need to have an executive session. Okay, and for the mayor's agenda, we need to have an executive session. Um, I don't have the sheet. That, uh, has the words.
Better have the words.
Right, yeah.
Don't want to say something wrong.
I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss the city manager's annual review process pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in the city council chamber at?
Eight twenty-five?
At eight twenty-five PM. The executive session will include the city attorney, city manager and assistant city manager. I'm sorry. Ex-nay on the city attorney.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move into executive session. Thank you, folks.